Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Please stand for the pleasure invocation by Councilmember Rich Pauls.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like everybody is happy. To me, happiness is not collecting toys, it is when you give those toys away to others. Thank you.
City Clerk's certified publication of daily record on October 17th in Northbury Precinct on regular city council meeting October 21st, 2014. Current topic of meetings, that's the post name White binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Ordinance on second reading, Ray Bonds, item number five ordinance, supplemental to ordinance number 37507 authorizing and directing an issue of additional bonds in one or more series not to exceed 160 million sanitary sewage system revenue bonds to return for identification purpose sanitary sewage system revenue bond series 2014.
Public hearing on number five is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed.
Zoning ordinance on final ring and planning board attachments, item number six ordinance to rezone property located at 1232 South 13th Street from General Industrial District to Neighborhood Business District. Property is also located within an ACI I-150 area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number six is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number seven ordinance to rezone property generally located southeast of 24th and Harney Streets from downtown service district to central business district. Said property also within an ACI I-PL area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seven is today, are there any proponents?
Darren Smith, Archicon Development, 505 Walker Woodbine, here to answer any questions about the application.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Pete, please come down.
I'm Donna Pope with Nebraska Urban Indian Health and we're neighbors to this project and I just want to express my support for it.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
So, this is an area, I think, worthy of some, a minute or two of our time if council members would indulge us because, once again, you're taking on a project that is in one of the more challenging areas and I can see why your neighbors are so excited and supportive to have a new neighbor breathing new life into these old buildings that have been vacant and redeveloped and challenged. So, do you want to take a minute just to tell us what you're up to and your year goals?
Sure, sure. The project started a couple of years ago. We bought the, and they're 2211 and 2215 Howard Street. They've been, they were vacant for several, several years. The two, two properties next to it were also vacant. Another developer had started work on them but was not able to finish and we tried to purchase those from him as well. Long story short, he's no longer in the country, so we ended up with them, fortunately, so we could control the neighborhood and make sure that all of the buildings that are currently vacant and have been vacant for a long period of time are historically renovated. This is the Howard Street Historic Apartment District. It was listed on the National Register in 1996. We completed the old downtown boxing club at 2401 Forum a year or so ago. So, this is kind of a natural evolution for us in the area. We see a lot of opportunity in the area of the Federal Reserve block and so we took it on not knowing that it was going to grow to be this large, but it has. We're looking forward to it. We've spent a lot of time with most of the neighbors, including the Urban Indian Health Coalition, and we were encouraged by the city to rezone the area, so that's why I'm here today.
A couple of observations and maybe a comment or two. First, you have a wonderful neighbor to your west. I don't know if you've gone through their properties that they restored where they have some housing to the north of their facility, and I believe it's Howard. And I think it's great that with what you're doing, should this come to fruition, and hopefully it will, and hopefully it will in the near term, what a nice diversity that component that this project brings to that neighborhood and breathing new life and pedestrian activity to that, what has been fairly quiet area because of the number of vacancies in those buildings, completely abandoned, really. The question I had from one constituent is that in these projects that you take on, often there's numerous challenges to the financing and if there's NIFA involved or if there's tax credits involved. Where are you in the, in terms of the barometric scale of likelihood of this project proceeding forward and a rough timeline for that?
Sure, and understandable concerns, anytime tax credit projects happen, they don't always happen quickly. The other project that maybe people are concerned about is the loss on 24th, the 24th and Vinson. We're scheduled to get tax credits this spring, so that will move forward and we'll be finished with that close to the end of next year. This project is-
That's what I call exorbitant beef.
Yes.
I think he calls the pickle.
Yeah, the pickle building, exorbitant beef, yes, the loss on 24th. So, right now, that project, we're at a category one with NIFA. That's in the collaborative resource and allocation for Nebraska program that NIFA has, and it was a challenging one to pull off, but we're scheduled for construction on that next year. This one is a market rate project, doesn't rely on low income housing tax credits, but it does rely on the federal historic tax credits and the new state historic tax credits. Really, that's the only way that we were able to do this project in the near term was because of the new state historic tax credits. Now, the final rules are currently being promulgated by SHPO and the Department of Revenue, so we're waiting for the final rules to come down, but every, every inclination we've gotten from both are that we're all fine, it's just a matter of paperwork and time, so.
So, the State Historic Preservation Office, when you say SHPO, right?
Yes.
So, those people maybe don't-
Oh, yes, sorry.
The component of, of tax credits from that statewide competitive program is a good vibe you're getting from SHPO or is it a-
Yes, yes. Lisa Schwab with State Historic Preservation Office has been to the site twice and she's approved all of the part one applications, which means that she's approved, she's agreed that they're all eligible and significant in terms of their historic value. We're working on the part two applications, which are the scopes of work that Ally Pointer submits to the State Historic Preservation Office. Those will roll one building at a time basically over the next couple of months, but we hope to have all of the part twos approved by the end of the year. So, as, as long as that happens, and there's no reason that it won't, then we can start construction, so.
Well, that's good to hear. There's a lot of initial enthusiasm for your project and I'm delighted to support it and really want to help you in any way that I can. I just don't want people to have their hopes and expectations elevated to the point where if something didn't happen or we had delays that they didn't know why or understand what happened in the process. But it sounds like the difference here between what you had on 24th and this one is market rate where you don't rely on a NIFA-
Correct.
That you're in the, is this the first phase of the state tax credit program award process or they already done some for-
No, this will be the first. They'll have one round, $15 million max next year at sunset in four years. And so, they're working on the final, final rules to determine who gets what in terms of tax credits, but we're very confident that, that we'll get all that we need to proceed. It's not, it won't be as competitive as the low income housing tax credits, which are extremely competitive and, and the thing that we didn't do correctly on the, on the Vinson Street project was it became very public very early. So, it's been something we've had to try to live up to, but it's a little bit out of our control, so we've learned a lesson from that in trying to, although this project has been out in the paper and it's very exciting for us, we don't want to create false expectations either.
Well, and you're not the only one on the agenda today-
Sure.
That's in the same boat. There's other projects and it's, you just had to be at a council meeting recently where we've had some ordinances or resolutions rescinding TIF agreements from-
Right.
-past deals that didn't come to fruition, so there's no criticism intended there, hope none was taken.
No.
It's just that if people are aware of the complexities of the project, they would understand the time that it takes sometimes for these things to happen and sometimes in the end they, they morph into something a little different, but admire your courage and your perseverance in these processes, both on Vinson and this one, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you.
So, I would make a motion to approve.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number eight ordinance to rezone property located at 8301 North 28th Avenue from General Industrial District to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number eight is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number nine ordinance to rezone property located at 2907 Q Street from General Industrial District to Neighborhood Business District. Property is also within a major commercial corridor overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number nine is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that there's, just for the identification of my colleagues, that I raised some concerns in the last couple of weeks regarding this particular piece of property. I have been kept up to speed from our planning department, our code enforcement folks, and I'm satisfied to a point where not only the applicant, but our inspectors and the neighbors as well have seemed to be on board with this and I would support, make a motion to approve.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. 10 to 12 is one case. 10 is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 30th and Leavenworth Street from Community Commercial District to General and General Industrial District. Two, Neighborhood Business District. Property is also located within an ACI I-PL area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 11 is resolution of the plat transmitted here with entitled Midtown Triangle is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 12 is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number 10, 11, and 12 are today. Any proponents, please? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, 10 to 12 are passed seven to zero. Item number 13 ordinance to rezone properties located at 5835 Ohio Street from R435 Single Family Residential District, high density to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 13 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Is there a motion? Motion approved. Second, roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is passed seven to zero. Item 14 ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 148th and Cass Circle from Limited Office District and Limited Commercial District to Limited Office District and Limited Commercial District. Property is also within an ACI IV PL area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 14 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is passed seven to zero. Item number, oh, city, pursuant to city council rule 70, agenda item number 15 should be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Present city council rule 70, agenda item number 16 should be laid over for two weeks. Special use permit. Item number 17 resolution of special use permit application to allow general retail sales in a general industrial district located at 13743 Industrial Road is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 17 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is passed seven to zero. Liquor, item number 18 Goldies 5502 North 103rd Street, Class C liquor license, notification and location.
Public hearing on number 18 is today, proponents, please.
Ron Kinkuski, co-owner with GCBRC, here to answer any questions.
And your address too, just for the record?
Oh, sorry. My personal address?
Sure.
Is 12519 Pier Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Chad Dargy, I'm, uh, my personal address? Oh, 35, 3309 South 88th Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 19, the 108 at 5059 South 108th Street, Class C liquor license, notification and location.
Public hearing on number 19 is today, proponents, please.
I'm AJ Ostrander. I'm a half-brother of the owner, Mark Bolinek, who couldn't be here today. He was already planned on a vacation for three weeks. He was going to try to fly in, but I haven't heard from him, so I'm here to answer any questions on it.
Great. Your address, please.
Minus 722 Willow Avenue, Bellevue.
Thank you. Any other proponents, please? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem, passed as the second time. Item 19 is adopted, six to zero. Item number 20 AMC Oakview Plaza, number 24, 3555 South 140th Plaza, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. You do have an opposition letter from Project Extra Mile.
Public hearing on number 20 is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Rob Fyethi-Frasier-Schrecker, Law Firm, 500 Energy Plaza on behalf of the applicant AMC. With me, Dave Walk, who is our manager.
David Walk, 10154 Grand Plaza.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. To my colleagues, I know that we are concerned a lot of times with too many of these liquor license coming into the city, but the problem here being that the model for this, I believe it started in Midtown, but it's catching on and it is working. There's no problems with it until we can get proof that it doesn't work, I'm not so sure that we can deny this, this application. I also know that with the video and Netflix industry and all that, that movie theaters are under a crunch to be able to make money and it would be sad to have this particular site closed. So, I'm, I'm willing to take a gamble that the management will know how to do it and do it right. By the way, may I, let's see, if I could speak to you, if you could say your name again, please?
David Walk.
What are your plans to make sure that an adult doesn't buy a beverage and then pass it on to a child? Do you have people like doing the movie that can kind of walk up and down the aisles or what do you do?
We do. We actually have policies set in place that it limits the number purchased per person as well. We also do police the auditoriums in that we have ushers who check the auditoriums throughout the feature as well. We have this in place over at our council bluffs location over in Iowa as well and we have it across the country as well.
Okay, and like I said, if you can, if you can figure out that deal where a 20-year-old doesn't, or 22-year-old doesn't buy alcohol and give it to an 18-year-old, then I'm okay with it and you feel you have a plan that, that addresses that?
We do. We do as a company have this across the country and we do try our best to make sure that we have everything in place, that we do not have incidents such as that.
Okay. With that, then I'll move the approval.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
That's adopted, 20 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 21 Red Dragon, 2322 South 20th Street, Class I liquor license, notification and location.
Public hearing on number 21 is today, proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Young Kang, DBA Red Dragon, 2322 South 20th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thanks.
The broccoli beef's really good.
Item number 22 Saints Pub growing up, 4915 North 120th Street, Suite 1, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on number 22 is today, proponents, please.
I'm Tony Tadaro with Baird Home, represent Riley Drive. I'm with me Scott Anderson, the co-owner, and Sean Robinson, the manager, here in favor of the application.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. President.
Yes.
22 is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 23 German American Society at 3717 South 120th Street, request permission to appoint Thomas Powell, manager.
Public hearing on number 23 is today, proponents, please.
Thomas Powell, 7311 South 155th Avenue, Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 24 Stores Trophy Room Grill and Brewery, the 345 Riverfront Drive, request permission to appoint Thomas Markle, manager.
Public hearing on number 24 is today, proponents, please.
Tom Markle, 327 South 92nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 25 Trader Dros, 719, number 719 at 10305 Pacific Street, request permission to appoint Charles Staley, manager.
Public hearing on number 25 is today, proponents, please.
Charles Staley, 1133 South 96th Street, Omaha.
Thank you.
I'm the manager of the Trader Dros.
All right. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 26 Granite City Food and Beverage, 1001 North 102nd Street, request permission to appoint John Webb, manager of the present Class C liquor license and A of their present Class L group pub license.
Public hearing on number 26 is today, are there any proponents?
John Webb, 78 South Clarkson Street, Fremont.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 27 Kobe Steakhouse of Japan and Sushi Bar, 16801 Burke Avenue, request permission to appoint Kyle Nulis, manager.
Public hearing on number 27 is today, proponents, please.
Kylie Nyliss, 5638 Miami Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
James West, 6855 121st Road, Winfield, Kansas, owner and corporate officer of the Kobe Village Point Incorporated.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 28 AVP Energy, number three at 10505 Pacific Street, request permission to appoint Kevin Metress, manager.
Public hearing on number 28 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Counsel's wish? Motion approved. So typically, we require someone to be here, but is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion a second, roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of city council that calls on it placed on the consent agenda to be removed, items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda item number 29 was held on October 7th. Second, roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
29 is passed, seven to zero. We're going to remove items number 35 and 50.
The public hearings on agenda items number 30 through 34 and 36 through 49 and 51 through 53 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to take the opportunity to address items 37, 38, and 39 just for, just for a moment. I mentioned it this morning and I just wanted it on the record today that I think we have an opportunity here with these three contracts to really look at bringing in small emerging business opportunities here and to also look at some of our other contractors. It seems a lot of times we get some of the same contractors because we're used to working with these contractors and in some instances, I think we need to look outside or step outside the box and look at some potential other contractors that I believe can easily perform some of this work. There are some technical aspects of it, but I don't think that they're so technical that some of our SEV contracts or some of our minority of female contractors that are looking for work in this city can't do this work. So, I'm, I'm only mentioning this for the record to encourage all of us in, in, in the city to look at, take a look at these contracts more closely and look for opportunities to create an environment where a small and emerging business can take part in that and thereby build up their reputations as well so that we have a larger pool of, of individuals to draw from. That's my only comment and I, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stube, we had a rather long discussion this morning at precouncil with this. I would, I would ask for my own clarification here. Originally, the snow plan, the city employees of Foremans and above would be doing the day-to-day operational logistics and the administrative paperwork side of when we had a snow plan in operation during the season.
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 28, Colby Steakhouse of Japan and Sushi Bar, 16801 Burke Avenue, request permission to appoint Kyle Nulis, manager.
Public hearing on number 28 is today. Proponents, please.
Kylie Nyliss, 5638 Miami Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
James West, 6855 121st Road, Winfield, Kansas, owner and corporate officer of the Colby Village Point Incorporated.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
The broccoli beef's really good.
Item number 22, Saints Pub growing up, 4915 North 120th Street, Suite 1, Class I liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Tony Tadara with Baird Home, represent Riley Drive. I'm with me Scott Anderson, the co-owner, and Sean Robinson, the manager, here in favor of the application.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 25, Trader Dros, 719, number 719, at 10305 Pacific Street, request permission to appoint Charles Staley, manager.
Public hearing on number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Charles Staley, 1133 South 96th Street, Omaha.
Thank you.
I'm the manager of Trader Dros.
All right. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 30 through 34, 36 through 49, and 51 through 53 are adopted seven to zero. Now we'll go back to item 35, resolution that the preliminary engineering services agreement with items for the system management for Omaha Signal System Project is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 35 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Fitzer.
Mr. President, members of the council, Todd Fitzer, Public Works. I am available, as is Murthy Coady, our traffic engineer, and the proposed consultant here, if you have any questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed? Mr.
Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm hoping I can be enlightened today, because as I was driving, I live further west, and I was driving into this meeting, a meeting I had earlier this morning, I would go to a stoplight, and of course, my car shuts down. And then I'd go to another stoplight, and my car would shut down. My car, it's, it's what you want it to happen. This particular car, you know, it sits and shuts itself off. But I found out I was doing this on a regular basis. Then I read this, that what we have in front of us now, that we have a proposal that will help with the lighting situation. And that is something that I need to have a little bit more of an explanation of how this can help somebody like myself who uses the roads. And I just wondered if I could have somebody from Public Works at least begin, give me a little bit of information about this.
How much time do you have, councilman?
I think this is so-
This is my passion. I can talk, you know, I can talk in depth, as you'd like to, very briefly, on our signal system. And being out west, we have longer cycles out west. Generally, if you consider the way our city is laid out, when you get west of 680, we have our one-mile arterial grid. Those roads tend to be five lane sections. They tend to carry in excess of 25,000 cars a day. So the signal timing lengths out there, the cycle lengths are longer, because they become more efficient as they get longer. As a result of that, for example, if you are pulling out of a side street of a neighborhood, and there's one or two cars waiting, generally, there's a fairly heavy volume of traffic on that major roadway. So we want to keep that fairly heavy volume of traffic moving, if we can, so that they stop less frequently. Hence, the people in the neighborhoods tend to wait longer. Now, in your example, it is certainly not a perfect system. We do have interconnect, where we call, so the signals somewhat talk to each other. They are set based on the time of day for different directions. For example, Dodge Street, in the morning, once you get east of UNO, is timed basically as a one-way street, so you generally don't stop again. Now, if you happen to be coming westbound at that time in the morning, you stop a lot. And in the evening, it tends to be reversed. We tend to favor the waves going westbound on Dodge Street. If you're eastbound on Dodge, you tend to stop more often. Our new system will integrate smart technology to improve that communication and use what's referred to on some of the major corridors as an adaptive controller, an adaptive system. Essentially, what that does is uses cameras in all four directions. And it sees the intersection and is constantly calculating a way to provide a green movement for the largest number of vehicles. The way it was explained to me is, every five seconds, you have to give a cookie to every car, and the intention is to give away as few cookies as you can. So on 90th and Dodge, for example, in the morning, you have a constant flow going eastbound, and it checks every five seconds to see how many cars are waiting north and south. When that number gets really big, and it's getting out, giving out a lot of cookies for that north and south, those folks are waiting, then it will stop that eastbound movement, and it will let the north and south go. We have multiple timing plans in place today at our major signals, but we don't have eyes in the field all the time. So they're set to pre-change at certain times of the day. This will essentially monitor that system or that intersection 24/7. It's like somebody's watching it all the time. And it will adjust for a business letting out, a rush after a baseball or football game, anything that would be a change to the normal routine, it will adapt immediately, instead of falling back on a pre-programmed plan like we have today. So that just kind of covers the signal timing aspect of it. One other major important aspect of this is we'll have what's called a central operating software. Today, our signals do lots of different things if they're working correctly. But I'll give you an example of a side street, a side street detection. We have magnetic loops or cameras that detect when a car comes up on a side street. If that's working correctly, it'll notice that car come up there, it'll determine if it needs to go left or through, or if it's right, and it'll tell the controller, hey, you need to change the light to let this cargo. If that detection is malfunctioning, we have no way of knowing that today. We don't have anything that sends out a message or a note until somebody calls and says, hey, I sat at this light yesterday for five minutes, and it never changed for me, then we send out a technician, and they check in the field. In the future, our central operating software will be programmed to warn us when something like that happens. It will say, hey, we've got a call from this intersection. Every cycle for the last 24 hours, that's probably wrong. Or the opposite, we haven't gotten a call in the last 24 hours. And it will put up red flags for us, so that our technicians will go out and troubleshoot areas that they've basically been told aren't working correctly. So that will be a benefit, in that our system will be able to perform the way it's designed without somebody having to call and say, I don't know what's wrong out here, but this isn't working. So it's a 10-year program. We anticipate 10 years to get it implemented. Primarily, it's going to be using federal dollars with a 20% local match. We have a lot of safety dollars, which only involves a 10% local match that we're able to, to use and facilitate for this as well. And back to where this project ranks on an importance level, and compared to other city projects, when we go through our PROS-COM effort every year with MAPPA, and they evaluate all the projects in the region based on a preset federally approved grading criteria, this project was the top-ranked project in the area last year. They feel that it offers huge benefits from an efficiency standpoint, air quality, travel time, and it can extend also into other surrounding jurisdictions as our city travels south of Harrison Street into Sarpy County and, and the Douglas County system as well.
I heard air quality and travel time. Of course, I talked earlier about travel time. The air quality, is that reason why my car shuts down?
Maybe you need to tune up.
No, it's-
I don't, I don't know-
Other cars automatically shut down.
...for our, and it will put up red flags for us so that our technicians will go out and troubleshoot areas that they've basically been told aren't working correctly. So, that will be a benefit in that our system will be able to perform the way it's designed without somebody having to call and say, "I don't know what's wrong out here, but this isn't working." So, it's a ten-year program. We anticipate ten years to get it implemented. Primarily, it's going to be using federal dollars with a 20% local match. We have a lot of safety dollars, which only involves a 10% local match that we're able to use and facilitate for this as well. And back to where this project ranks on an importance level and compared to other city projects, when we go through our Prosecom effort every year with MAPPA and they evaluate all the projects in the region based on a preset federally-approved grading criteria, this project was the top-ranked project in the area last year. They feel that it offers huge benefits from an efficiency standpoint, air quality, travel time, and it can extend also into other surrounding jurisdictions as our city travels south of Harrison Street into Sarpy County and the Douglas County system as well.
I heard air quality and travel time. Of course, I talked earlier about travel time. Air quality, is that reason why my car shuts down?
Maybe you need to tune up.
No, it's...
I don't know.
Other cars automatically shut down.
Well, there's efficient cars now that do shut down at a red light, but certainly, probably the reason on your car is fuel economy. But air quality is incredibly important in Omaha, and a lot of people don't understand how close we are. There's federal standards, and if your city gets out of compliance within those federal standards, you are labeled as what's called noncompliant, and it changes how you can spend your federal dollars. And it is not a friendly place to be. We, the City of Omaha, do not want to wind up in noncompliance for our air quality. It will change every step we have to take toward getting a transportation project built, and we are obviously trying to remain in attainment. That's the desired place to be.
Are we close? I mean, are...
We are close, yeah. The standard...
So, this actually, you're telling me, is almost needed, for sure.
It's one of the reasons that it ranked so high on MAPPA's Prosecom grading system is because air quality is factored into that, and this project has a great opportunity to keep us within that attainment level and improve the efficiencies of our arterial system.
Okay, I heard ten years. What did you say when you said ten years?
Well, we anticipate, this project was identified in the master plan study that was done as a $35 million project to implement. We have a goal to get that implemented over the next ten years, and we have funding mechanisms in place through the MAPPA STP program for the next three years to get that started.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to say, okay, ten years, ten years from what date did we...
From now.
From now to ten?
The goal would be, yeah, we've got our system manager, that's what you're writing on today, and that is, that's the goal, is it starts today, and within ten years, we hope to be substantially complete with this project.
Okay, so, that would help with air quality, courses, traffic movement, and why else would I want other than those two things? I mean, is there anything?
Well, if you look at our system today, it is a vintage 1970 system, and I have to laugh, one of the news stations did a story last week, and we took them down to our, where we're going to build our new traffic control center at 50th and G, where our traffic maintenance shop is, and on the 72-inch flat screen that will monitor traffic movements in the future, we brought up a blue screen, a monochrome screen, and showed them the dial-up internet that is used to communicate currently today with our existing signal system. It is, it's seriously outdated, and we're not using any fiber optic, we're using very, very few camera feeds. We can't get parts to maintain it anymore, they've quit doing updates. We're having to buy some parts used for our controllers from other cities that are phasing these things out, and we simply are, and we have fallen behind.
Okay, so, if we're talking about efficiency, this looks like the direction we ought to be going, if nothing else, the efficiency, because we're going to someday not be able to find those parts.
That's correct. It's like trying to drive a 1930 automobile as your everyday car, it becomes very difficult.
Okay, a couple more here. Ten years, which I understand, thirty, how many million?
We estimate $35 million project over the next ten years.
How much would the city be approximately? I know, it's just...
With the breakdown of federal funding, the STP dollars are an 80-20 breakdown, federal and 20% local. We have been able to achieve quite a bit of success with utilizing safety funding, and that is a 90% federal dollar provision with a 10% local match, and we've been able to use that for some of our adaptive systems, because we were able to convince the Safety Council that if we can improve the corridor, it will reduce the amount of rear-end accidents happening there and the amount of delay, which eventually leads to accidents as well, and they've concurred with that, and they're funding several of our corridor efforts through that safety funding mechanism.
Well, you just threw in another factor, now we're talking about safety.
That's correct. Congestion equals unsafe conditions. The higher level of congestion you get, the more frustrated drivers become, the more chances they take, they accept smaller gaps in traffic to get out onto side streets, they wait through two or three signals, they tend to want to run red lights as they get through. So, the more efficient our system can get, generally, safety will follow suit along with that. We've seen cost-benefit analysis for corridor timing plans in the 25 to 30 to 1 ratio of dollars spent, the benefit being the users, the commuters in the city.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the lights, Mr. Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Jerome?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-five is adopted, seven to zero. Now, item number 50, resolution final offer, attached as Exhibit A to the, to this resolution is the City of Omaha's final offer to Professional Firefight Association of Omaha Local 385 for the calendar years 2015, 16, and 17 for wages and benefits. Public hearing number 50 is today, are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Question and second?
Is that five weeks?
Motion and second, Ms. Milton.
First, can I add, I couldn't hear how many weeks you were asking for, because I thought we had talked about four.
Yeah, I thought it was a... No, we can't do three, we can do four or five.
Okay. I don't care. You know. I just couldn't, I just couldn't hear, it was my understanding you were asking for four, but...
I was, but I thought I was told to recount.
You can do four, you can't do three, so, four is okay.
Four or five.
Okay.
Well, and I got, I...
The mood is four.
Yeah, I would ask for as short a period as possible. I will be voting no to the layover, and I think earlier at pre-council, I had said that I didn't have a problem with the layover necessarily, but after having some discussions over lunch, I guess I learned some things that I didn't know earlier, and I, my fear is that this will stall, this could potentially stall the negotiations. And I think it's extremely important at this point, it was, it was my understanding that both parties had agreed they would be done negotiating by the end of September. I don't know if either side is actually here today to answer any questions. Anybody here? Okay, well, I, unfortunately, that was, I wish, I actually wish both sides were here so that maybe we could ask some questions, such as, could they both commit to make sure that there are final offers exchanged by the end of November? This is going to be so important to our, number one, our budget, which ends December 21st of 2015. Number two, we gave the negotiating power back to the mayor, and the mayor is asking that we approve this final offer. It's not a last and final offer, at least as I was told, but a final offer, and we really need to encourage, I think, the other side to at least respond by the end of November. I was kind of hoping that I could have both sides here so that we could get some of those commitments put on the record if we were going to lay this over. But based on the fact that we did give the negotiating power back to the mayor, I don't know that any of us disagree with this offer. I would rather get this going, because if this ends up with the CIR, I believe that it should be sooner than later. I'm hopeful that it won't, and I'm really hopeful that the two sides are going to get together, but when I asked today, well, what are the dates for negoti, when are you going to meet? When are the next meeting dates? There aren't any scheduled, and I guess that's my, that's my concern. I had no problems laying it over, because it was my understanding that there were ongoing negotiations and that we may actually have a tentative agreement reached in the next couple of weeks. So, that would have been my goal before presenting this final offer, I'd rather have that, and I think that that may be the intention of this council. But my fear at this point, when I asked some additional questions, and I was told, well, we don't really have those dates, and so, I'm really afraid that this is just going to stall for four weeks, and I don't, I don't want to see that happen. And Mr. De...
Yeah, I, I'm okay with a four-week layover. The reasons are multiple. I suspect one reason why you don't have people here is because of the painful lessons of the past, where we brought both sides to the podium in a public forum and asked them for commitments, then that, then later got us sued for bad faith negotiations, because all that stuff is supposed to happen at the table. And, Mr. Kratz, is that correct?
I'll call it as soon as I can.
Yeah, just correct.
So, they have to be very delicate in terms of what happens where and when, so, I, even if you wanted to ask them to commit to that as whatever well-intentioned effort you had in mind to do, that would then be, could be construed by the union as a bad faith negotiation tactic, by asking them to commit to that, and therefore, subject us to being sued for that. But, we can confirm, and I, and I can confirm, that today, both sides have said they are talking, and in my view, the best place for this negotiations to happen, and the only place, should be at the table, and when you have a final offer that's put out in the public, whatever the intentions or motivations are, it can be problematic in terms of creating the impression that that is our best final offer, whether it's a final offer or not, and the public, it's, it would be exceedingly difficult in my mind to explain why, if something is produced as an agreement later on, is different from that anyway. Well, why is that different? Why did you not do what you said you were going to do as your final offer at that Tuesday in October when you did it? So, that's another reason to allow this to happen, and I think we owe it to our constituents that we do this to allow the negotiation process to run its course in a reasonable timeframe in a way that doesn't create false expectations as to what the end work product might be. And not, not that that's with any, I don't know, mal-intentioned, or it is where we are, in that, to say we are in negotiation, but I don't necessarily think that what is on the agenda reflects what ultimately will be produced, and therefore, why create an expectation among our constituents that you're going to deliver something that in all likelihood, because of the negotiation process, is likely to change, and therefore, be unable to account for why it's different.
But, I know, but I also think, there's also procedural reasons why we're doing this today. I, I mean, there is, there is a timing issue, and we have to offer, make a final offer...
Right.
And we, in order, in order to continue this, because this contract actually affects the 2015 budget, so if we do not have something negotiated by then, we are going to run into some difficulties on how we're going to continue to pay for what, what we're doing, and there may be additional issues. So, I do think that this is a procedural, this is, is a procedural matter that I wish all of our constituents would understand, just because we have this final offer, negotiations continue, and I think both sides understand that.
Whether you, whether you make a last final, or last best and final, or final, you have until, let's just assume arguendo that it's the end of the city's budget year, assuming that's December 21st, or it's December 31st, for CIR filing purposes, either of those dates, nothing is going to happen, and from my experience in past negotiations and contracts and CIR disputes, nothing happens in '15 that isn't already, in a worst-case scenario, conservatively put into the worst, the wage adjustment account that we budgeted for '15, is exceedingly difficult to imagine, and the city's labor relations manager confirmed today that anything quick is going to come from the CIR in terms of resolution of any dispute, because this would be, if it goes that way, and I hope it does, and I hope this, this negotiation continues as it's going, and we reached an agreement to avoid that, but this would be the first case impression under the new CIR law, and the amount of expertise and workup for the case that would be required will take several months, anecdotally, it will take several hundred thousand dollars as well, and in, in no case that I can remember that has gone through the CIR and disputes that have been pending since I've been on the council, has anything happened in less than a year. Usually, we're playing catch-up after the fact with wage adjustment accounts that have been then carried over to add to the next wage adjustment account, and then we have that money, and we resolve it that way. And finally, I would say this, is that, you know, the negotiation process, and you know from your, your law practices, I do, especially with this one, when you're dealing with, as the issues narrow, the complexities of the issues that remain require extensive analysis, response, counter-analysis, response, and I think that, and I would, I would amend my motion or withdraw that one and make a four-week layover, just so that, because I know we can do that now and not do five, but those processes are working, we were confirmed this morning that, that they are talking, and I think four weeks is reasonable for that purpose, as well as the other reasons I articulated. And I understand if you disagree with that, and you, you said why, and that's, I guess we just agree to disagree on this one, but...
No, I think that sometimes, though, you almost need that, it's almost, you need that trial date. I mean, how many negotiations have you had where it's on the courthouse steps? Nobody really wants to go to trial, they wait until that very last minute before you finally make some of those hard decisions.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, and I think that, and of course, it's my motion to layover, so I would try to rationalize in my mind why four weeks is okay, and not in any way impair that sense of looming deadline, because it'll still be there. What, what will the meeting be, the date, Mr. Clerk?
October, no, no, November 18.
So, November 18, there's still that looming deadline on the horizon, I think that creates the sense of urgency that you just referenced, in my view.
And I hope, and, I, I hope that's true. And I, I mean, I don't think that there's a lot of harm, I just think that if we're going to give the mayor the negotiating abilities, and I, I think it's, it's great that we're still sitting here and we're advising her of our opinion, and we've been kept apprised by Mr. McQueen on everything that's going on, but if this is something she feels she needs in that negotiation process, since we have given it back to her, I, I do think we should defer to her, at least on the timing, but hopefully, both sides will negotiate, and our arguments will be completely moot by then, and that's what I can hope for.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is deja vu, reminds me of many years ago when I was on the, on the team, working, trying to get contracts settled. I think I'm of the belief with Councilwoman Milton, I can remember a while back, we talked about having the mayor be in charge of this, because the council in the past, under your leadership, did, did work on the negotiations, so, it appears to me, the person who is in charge of the negotiations would prefer we stick with this, and I'll probably have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greit.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, you know, first of all, I'll just make a comment, and then I've got a couple of questions, you know, but when we were, we've had several discussions, and we were led to believe, at least I was led to believe, and I'm just going to speak for myself, I was led to believe that the union was on board with this tactic, and then I find out just a couple of days ago that the union is not in favor of this, and I'm not trying to pick sides one way or the other here, but when you tell me that somebody is in favor of something, and then I find out that they're not, then I have serious questions as to how, how far this council should be involved in this negotiation process. Mr. Kratz, if you can help me, what's the, what's the issue with the timing?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. I am not involved in the negotiations, sorry, this is a little bit of a speculation, but it's my understanding that in order to go to this Court of Industrial Relations, Commission on Industrial Relations, the city needs to make a final offer to the union, and with that, you can then proceed on to the commission.
Okay, that's, I guess...
Let me add to that, we also, in order to impact the 2014 year, we need to do it before the end of the year.
But we're not at impasse?
I, I don't know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not that, that involved in the negotiations.
I mean, I guess if we're not at impasse, why are we here?
Again, it's a procedural process to go to the CIR.
But what difference does it make if we do it now or four, or five weeks from now?
Well, like, Councilman, well, it, it all depends on a strategy, I mean, in everything you do, there's some strategic issues that you deal with, I'm not sure what they are in this particular case, but I assume there's some strategy involved as far as doing it now as opposed to later, but...
Okay, so, we're, we're talking about a strategy that we're not involved in, a strategy that we don't know anything about, but we're asked to make a decision on it. Is that what we're doing here?
You could...
Somebody answer the question.
Can I answer?
We're in a process, we, we have a, there's a strategy that we don't know about, a strategy that we're not involved in, but it's a strategy that we're supposed to vote on. Is that what we're being asked to do here? Because I don't know what the strategy is, and I was told at the beginning that the fire was on board with this, and now I find out that they're not. So, what are we doing here?
May I, may I?
You can.
And I know, I, I can't answer for anybody, I'm going to give you what my, my understanding of it is, and again, I'm not a labor negotiations lawyer either, but I believe what is necessary to happen procedurally, which I think, when I was told that the union was on board, it was that they understood we have to make a final offer, not that they agreed with the terms of the offer, but they understood that procedurally, we have these union procedure and CIR procedure rules that have to be followed. I mean, currently, we're being sued by the police union because of a failure to send the letter.
But that's the union, I'm talking, yeah.
I understand that, but that's, we're talking, there's these little procedural rules, such as you have to send a letter by a certain date, even though you're discussing things, or else you're stuck with the contract, and so, we have a procedural rule where the city has to make a final offer, and you have to do it in a, in a timely manner, we can't make our final offer, I, I mean, in my opinion, you don't want to wait until the last day of the year, where it's the last day to actually go in and then file for, down at the CIR. We make a final offer, and this is not a last and best offer, which is what Mr. McQueen clarified for us this morning. I specifically asked the question, is this our last best and final offer? He said, no, it's a final offer, and it's a procedural, it's, it's very procedural, but here's what we would like. Now, the fire union can come back with basically their final offer, not a last and best final offer. It starts to get a little, I, I agree, and I, I'm just explaining it, I didn't create it, and I certainly didn't write it, nor would I, but I'm trying to explain the process that I don't necessarily think we're being asked to do anything for purposes of strategy, but it's procedural, and that's what the fire union understood, we are still willing to negotiate from this final offer, but the final offer had to be filed for timing and procedural purposes.
Why can't it wait?
I, I don't know that, that the delay will necessarily delay anything other than, if we can't reach an agreement, and we need to go, and we need to go to the CIR, it'll just delay the ruling of the CIR even longer.
Four weeks, I mean, but it...
I, I understand, and I'm not arguing, I actually was just trying to clarify something that I got clarified earlier, so...
Okay.
I, I, I can't, this is a, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just trying to tell you.
I'm not, I'm just, I, I'm just, I guess I'm just at a loss as to, have we done this before, Mr. Kratz? Have we used this procedure before?
Yeah, I believe we have, not too long ago.
Okay, and so, there's, and, and so, we were still in negotiations, we were still negotiating, everybody was still negotiating in good faith, but we, but we sent, but we sent a, but we, but we did this so that procedurally, we can go to the CIR. That's the part that's killing me, because I'm not understanding, we can go to the CIR at any point.
Can I jump in?
Please.
Okay.
I want to have some clarification as to why we're doing this.
In, before the CIR law was changed...
Okay.
When Councilmember Festerson and Gene Stothart, now the mayor, was a council member, and I were on the Law Negotiations Committee, the way it was explained to us is, and we had several of these, your last offer, or this is our final offer, and you, and the lawyers in the past, before the law changed, would simply zip off the letter, which is, this is our, or memo, of what our final offer was. Well, the final offer is never the final offer, okay?
Okay.
That's what Councilmember Milton was trying to say, it's not the final offer.
Okay.
Uses the word final.
I, I get that.
It always changes. What's changed is, under the CIR law change, is we are now required to make this resolution of what is a final offer, to procedurally put in the queue a controversy ripe for the CIR to know we've reached a point of a final offer, okay? What it, what you just heard, in whether you think a layover is reasonable or not, and the mayor's request, and what we just heard articulated by Councilwoman Milton, as I heard her, was, this is what the mayor wants to do now, procedurally, to get the CIR case ready sooner rather than four weeks later. You have until the end of the year to get it filed. What I've articulated is, the four weeks to November 18th, in my view, isn't an unreasonable four-week wait to allow the parties to continue to talk before we take this step to put it in the queue for the CIR. It's a difference of opinion. So, that, as I see it, is what this is about.
Okay, so, the intent here then is to, the intent is, as, as I'm hearing it, as I'm hearing you say it, is for us to, what difference does it make if we put it in the queue now as opposed to four weeks from now?
Well, it's the differences of the lenses through which you view this issue. If you think you want to get the CIR case ready sooner, then you would vote against the motion to layover. If you want, if you don't think four-week wait is unreasonable, you would want to vote for the layover, not against it. In either event, they're talking, they're going to continue to talk, and what you see here may or may, is likely not going to be the end product, because a final offer, whether it's in the new system or the old system, isn't really what it suggests, so...
Chris, I'm sure that we, we were just clear as mud in that, and I don't know that, and, and I, I think it just...
Thank you, Mr. President, I, thank you.
We're not very, Chris, we're not very far off at this point, and I, I'm not sure that it probably merits even the amount of discussion that we're giving it today.
It does.
I just wanted some assurances that without kind of this deadline we're here, that I'm afraid that the negotiations will just kind of sit, and it won't be, we're not getting people to the table.
But is there any indication of that? It doesn't seem like that they, because they had a negotiation this past Friday, so it doesn't seem like they're not talking, or that they're slowing down, or that they're not meeting, so I guess...
But here's, here's the other side. The other side is, if in four weeks, if you vote for the layover, and if the layover passes, then you'd probably be in a position in the fourth or fifth week to say, okay, now we have to vote on a final offer, because procedurally, they need time to respond, and then, we would then have a few weeks or two weeks available to file before the end of the year. So, this, what, if this passes today, the next time it comes up, it may be procedurally that... that time would be more of a critical issue in terms of preserving the rights of the city under the new law to get it procedurally ready.
Okay, I, okay, so you're going, are you going to amend your motion?
I did.
And I'll amend, I'll amend my second to four weeks.
Thanks, I'd agree with that last notion, notion that we're spending probably too much time on this than we need to, but in my mind, what I was briefed on was that this is a procedural motion to preserve your CIR rights for next year, and that can be done anytime, now, four weeks from now, or even, I believe, the last week of December, and that's happened before, too. But we're also briefed that both sides are still talking, there's not an impasse, and I think a four-week layover is reasonable and allows that, hopefully, to come to fruition, and I think we all hope that that occurs. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you. Mr. President, the only thing I have in my mind right now is who is in charge of negotiations, and if this is a strategy, which I'm not privy to, but I'm saying whoever's in charge of negotiations, we should allow that person or persons to proceed with what they think is right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
And, and, and I would say, if I looked at it in only that view, I might not disagree with you. Where I respectfully diverge is that our constituents will see and read and hear about what our final offer was, and in my view, create an expectation in them that this is what we thought in our best judgment, since it's called a quote "final offer," is what we thought we could and should achieve in the best interests of the city and the taxpayers. And since the insider baseball, since it's Royals tonight in the first game of the World Series, the insiders know, well, a final offer really isn't a final offer, our constituents at their doorsteps, when we, when we knock door to door, we see them, or hear, read their emails, or get their phone calls, in my view, likely will view this differently. And I don't see how I could explain in a way that they wouldn't just come back in a retort to say, well, what does final mean? So, that's, that's why I take a different view.
What does some standard mean?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, just a quick editorial, in the future, I'd like to have someone from the mayor's office here to answer these questions that we cannot answer.
Thank you. No further lights, there's a motion in a second. Roll call. Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The four-week layover is adopted, four to three. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 54 through 58 shall be held on third reading, or in second reading. Item 59, ordinance to approve an addendum to the terms, term software license agreement between Info US Incorporated and the city to extend the support services for the City of Omaha payroll software entitled Masterpiece for five additional years. Public hearing on number 59 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 60, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorized distribution of the National Bioterrorist Hospital Preparedness Program Award to coordinate the medical response to terrorist incidents and/or other public health medical emergency events.
Public hearing on number 60 is today, are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 61 through 65 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 60, where am I, as I find it? Is there any more? Maybe that's not...
70.
66 through 73 shall be held on the second reading. Chairman of the Board of Equalization reports approval of the plans of assessment and adjustments, corrections made at the regular meeting held October 7.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call. Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call. Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call. Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
3:15, we are adjourned.